We will call this meeting in the Lennox School Committee to order. And as always, note, the meeting is being broadcast live on CTSB-TV.org, Education Channel 1302, and will also be rebroadcast on CTSB-TV. First item is hearing of visitors, seeing none, and having no correspondence. We will move on to the board report, which features our fine meeting minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to accept the minutes of January 13, 2025.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. And we're already on to item five, the superintendent's report.
All right. Highlights and recognitions. I wanted to let the viewing audience know that the coaches versus cancer event will be two of them, one with the girls' team tomorrow at 5:30, and then the boys on Thursday will be hosted here. Please turn out if possible. And we have 16th, 10th, and 11th graders that began their peer mentor training with the Anti-Defamation League today. And we celebrated the halfway point. Today is day 90. We are halfway through the school year. We have next the Odyssey of the Mind field trip request.
I think Kim will handle that.
Okay.
Yep, I can do that now or I can do it during the
No, it's great.
Community engagement. Now, okay. I'm asking the approval of a field trip for the Odyssey of the Mind, which is a program that I was getting up and going for the community engagement subcommittee that Ronnie and I are on. We have a team of seven fifth graders who would like to go to a competition in Maine April 5th. We, all of the parents, at least one parent of each child plans to attend, so we would, they would likely get the child a hotel. We would not need transportation because the parents would be driving the children. I also know that we would need a nurse if the parents were not all in attendance, but they all plan to be in attendance. But because it is going into Maine, we are asking permission for the team of Odyssey the Mind for the trip to the tournament in Maine.
Is April 5th the weekend?
It's a Saturday, so we would probably leave, wouldn't have to miss any school, leave Friday after school, get a hotel for the night, and then it would be an early morning because it's about four hours away.
Is it a school-sponsored trip?
We have gotten a leaf grant, which has paid for the membership so far, and the tournament entrance. It's a club, like at the school, yeah.
What do you guys do there? Is there a specific topic that you?
Yep, so Odyssey the Mind is a, it's kind of a STEM program. We were hoping to get, you know, more than one team. We ended up just having the one team that will be going. They have to solve a long-term problem, which is what they're starting to work on now. Every week they get together, they're given a choice of five problems, they've chosen one, they work on a solution to that problem, they get scored on it. They also have to present it with a certain style or flair, so they get points for the presentation of their problem solution. They write a skit, they kind of act it out, and then there's a separate part where they have a spontaneous problem, just to kind of get them kind of thinking on their feet. So they'll be
Is it a competition?
It is, yep. There'll be, I don't know how many teams are there. This is our first time doing it, but they will be competing against other teams.
That's great, so there could be follow-on trips, depending
Yeah, so there's, generally with this, it's, there's low enrollment for teams this year, just COVID, I guess, kind of dropped it down. So they would normally have a regional one, which would be like more in the state of Massachusetts, and then they would do a regional one, local then regional. Regional would have been the main one, but that's where we start because there's not enough teams to compete at a lower. And then if they do well there, Michigan is a world final, but we're gonna worry about Maine first.
How many kids are doing it?
We originally had 20 signed up, but, so the coach is Josh Levin. He's a parent of, I think, seventh grader and a fifth grader. And he saw the short timeline, so he wanted to have the kids meet once a week, and some got a little intimidated by the frequent meetings, so we had some drop out. So we have just the team of seven right now, and then we were trying to do another team that could kind of go through the motions but not compete, so they would have less time of commitment. But it didn't seem that we could make a second team work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Very, all in grade, or is it?
For now, we're trying fifth grade. Would love to open it up to more in the school. You can start it actually as far as second grade and go all the way up through high school. I had never done this. I heard about it from a coworker, so I thought it'd be great, but because I'd never done it, I didn't want to start too big, bite off more than we could.
Sounds great. What's the cost to the students?
Nothing. I mean, a hotel, if the parents are all going, it would be the cost of the hotel room, but the parents all plan to go.
Well, I'm happy to move to accept the Odyssey of the Mind trip to Maine as presented by Ms. Winger, and thank you for doing this, because I think it's a
One second.
It's a great endeavor.
Thank you.
May I say that kudos are in order to bring this from the idea of hearing about this really engaging, neat opportunity for students to actually be here presenting and having a team that's going to be able to go to Maine. It's very impressive. Nicely done.
I wonder if I, oh, we have to vote first?
All of these comments are out of order as the motion has not been seconded.
It was seconded.
Oh, it was seconded.
By Ms. Graham.
Why didn't hear the seconding motion?
Very quickly. Enthusiastic.
Enthusiastic. Well, is there any further and in-order discussion?
I just have a comment, but I'll wait till after we vote, because it's not about the motion.
All right, fair enough. Well, in that case, all in favor?
All right. And my comment is maybe after, if we have time in our agenda for the spring, we could hear, have the students present something, and we could hear from them directly how it's going.
Absolutely.
It's just a thought. I think that would be a real example of an opportunity for fifth graders to
We would actually
Present to us. We sometimes have the students come, so
Yeah, we would actually love, I think it had been early on, I had spoken to Brenda about the kids showing off at either the science fair or something, what they have come up with, so that the school would be able to see it as well.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Thank you to Josh, too.
Thank you.
If it pleases the chair, can we see, but going out of order, the person who's going to present on MSBA, I don't see in the audience yet?
Yes, do we, can someone check in with him? Thank you. And yes, we'll come back to that at the end. Oh, yeah, should we do CPAC first, and then we will come back to budget?
Are all of your folks here?
Yeah.
All right, great, well, let's do CPAC and then budget.
Welcome. I just knew they were coming.
You're welcome.
So I'm here to talk to you tonight about the really critical role of a special education parent advisory council, which I feel a little remiss that we haven't been able to get this on the sort of docket earlier in my tenure, just to talk about the good work that we're doing and about the involvement. And I'm really proud to say that we have a really, I think, strong parent advisory council here in Lennox, and I know other districts sometimes struggle to actually get membership. The council is really an advisory council, and it's led by the parents. So they are directly responsible for setting the agenda meeting and then giving us recommendations, advice, you know, sort of direction around anything that they have concerns about or that they are proud about, celebrate, that they want to celebrate, programming that they want to see. So it's not a Jesse regulation, but it is a state law in Massachusetts to have a special education parent advisory council. So that is sort of a mandate, but it's not just a formality, it is really something that does bridge the work of the family and the community to the school. So I sit directly on the advisory council as sort of a conduit or a liaison to the rest of the school district. And so our involvement and our team has sort of grown since I started. We had three members, I think, upon my arrival, and we are at about seven or eight people currently that attend fairly consistently. We have some very new enthusiastic members, which I'm very happy and pleased to say, and it's gotten things going even more, sort of some more momentum with things. We're tackling, every year we have to tackle an annual rights training, so that's the one mandate that is sort of in the ranks. So we have to provide in three different areas, either on the understanding of IEP, evaluation and eligibility, and then transition planning in those three topic areas. So that has to happen. Anything else, the sort of areas that they, that the council would like to explore or things that they would like to look at is really up to the parents and, you know, the direction that they would like to go. We do have a set of bylaws, elected officials, there's president, vice president, the secretary. We operate with budget that sort of comes under the purview of the budget that I have, and I set aside money that we are usually use for the Massachusetts Parent Advisory Council. So that larger organization is by the Federation for Children with Special Needs, and we join up with that, and we have either discounted rates on some of their trainings, and we do get the eligibility, one of these three annual rights ones, we get that included with our membership, plus a lot of guidance and support, and other training materials are forwarded to the members. I do have a parent or two, maybe, that would like to speak, and I always like them to, you know, to say what their experiences like either as part of that as a parent, and, you know, anything else that we're looking for, but we'll like to keep folks, you know, sort of in communication with us around what we're doing, because that could be things that, you know, directly, you know, might inform some of our work together as a group and as with all of you as the school committee. So that is one of the things as well. We are supposed to have some communication, and I want to make sure that that's a regular thing.
Thanks for that. I'll introduce yourselves. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, of course. Kat, say hi. Hi, I'm Catherine Burke Canton. Is this thing on? My son, Jack Canton, is in third grade, and he has a full IEP plan right now, and he has since kindergarten, about halfway through. The team at Morris has been incredible. Someone told me early, early on when Jack, we lived in Los Angeles, and he was about, I don't know, maybe six months, I said, if you don't, no, he wasn't that young, maybe that young, if you don't learn how to speak Jack's language now, you're gonna have a tough time. And so did my brother, who's a psychiatrist, and I got very mad at both of those people, including, and so did my husband. But we get it now, and we get what that means, because you need to speak all of your kids' languages, but specifically these kids that are really gifted and have extra special powers, I like to say. And so through, with Morris, I've been able to find a way to speak his language, and also find resources in the community to help support that, and support teachers and the rest of the team at Morris. It's a really, I maybe lean on them too much, community. But also Jack's been able to use his ADHD to, for the better. He's learning, and I can see such progress, but it's with all of this help, extra help that he gets, that he's able to do that. I did not know about SEPAC, I don't even know how to pronounce it really still, until very recently. Not that it wasn't available, but I, I've heard of it, I just thought that maybe it was for a different kind of disability, or I wasn't sure what it was. And I went to the meeting and, for the first time, and I said, this is such a great support system, not only for me as a parent, but for my child, and also as a parent to parent to a community, which was really something that I lacked. I felt kind of ostracized in the beginning, having a child that was pretty much exactly like me. And so, so through that, it's been such a great empowering thing, and we just want to spread the word, and we want to, I didn't even know that this one SEPAC that meets one, the second Thursday every month is for our entire district, which is beautiful. There's one person from the high school that comes, and we just want this to become something that, it's, it's for parents, but it's for students, and it becomes a place to go and just learn about your kid and other kids, and how to work together, and that you're not alone. So if anybody can attest to sort of, we'd love to just be able to spread the word more and share more about it, and make it not so specific to a disability, let's say. But Morgan here has come in and really taken the reins with the marketing.
You may also be able to raise the microphone.
I don't know if I'm qualified to do that. I think it's fine right where it is. I'm Morgan, yeah, that would be perfect. I'm Morgan Seenan. My son is in preschool, he has an autism diagnosis, and he is one of the coolest kids I've ever met. He's three, and he's phenomenal. I went through a school system in New Jersey as a full IEP student. I was in the special education program, and one thing that my parents struggled with was knowing what on earth was going on. They didn't have a support system from parents, none of the other IEP kids' parents knew each other, none of them ever spoke. It was not mandated to have this type of relationship in your district, so he was kind of the voice of reason, and if he found out another one of my friends had an IEP, he was like, can I speak to your parents? I'd like to tell them about their rights. He was retired, he had all the time in the world, he was the school's worst thing there, but the best thing for us. What we're trying to do is get the rest of the parents on board to come be part of our community. We can learn together, you know, what our kids' rights are, what our rights are, what we can ask for, what's a little uncomfortable to ask for, but we absolutely can. From what I've been told, there's 95 IEP students in our district, and there's about six or seven people in CPAC, SEPAC, whatever we're gonna call it today. So our newest thing is just kind of spreading the word. If you are talking to someone who goes in our district, whose child might have an IEP, might be in the IEP process, might have a 504, mention what we're doing. We're changing it up so that we can be more reliable. It's every second Thursday, 5:30 in the Morris conference room. Until we outgrow that, I keep telling Brian that we are going to outgrow it. There's like 10 chairs in there?
We want the library.
We want the library. We're taking it with force. So if you could spread the word, we're spreading flyers out, the flyers have gotten a few new people, we're sending lots more emails, and we're just trying to build a community of people that can rely on each other. Not everyone is as enthusiastic as Kat and I are about getting resources together, so we started our own page on the website that we're trying to publish in the next few weeks to spread those resources amongst the other parents who aren't looking for them but need them. So if any of you can spread that word for us as well, we would definitely appreciate it.
There is one more thing. A couple of opportunities have come to us through this, it's a parent blood group, as we said, and they come through Brian, which is amazing, but he's a busy man, and there are things that could, are helpful for our program, but also could be helpful for the school. We just had, we have a call tomorrow, a follow-up call with LEGO Education, and so these programs are amazing, but when I kind of have been reaching out to these people, back to them, it becomes a bigger conversation for the district. But I don't want to overwhelm people with this information, or, and so I also would love at some point to be able to figure out the best stream of communication without overwhelming people if it seems like something that could be offered to the school. I know there was a survey that just went around about how to bridge families and the school and students altogether, and these opportunities are also about that. And it's about students also learning about other students and acceptance, and it comes under the raw category and all of that. So I feel like this is something that could really pull families and parents together and become less fearful about talking about different ways of learning and living and mental health overall. So that's kind of where we're at.
Let us know how many times a week we can email you.
We're good.
So first, I want to thank you. Only that, I think I crossed this room, so I'd like to meet in person, and thank you to Brian. I think one of the most important things, and the many, many things that Brian and the whole team has been tackling, is the need to have the differentiated instruction within every classroom, so that some students have a higher level of needness, they do need very specific services, but with the MTSS and Alphabet soup, but the various initiatives that I'm really extremely grateful and proud of for our district tackling, is the idea that the classroom is for everyone. Every teacher can't be in every place at every minute, but we, I've heard the administrative team talk about really supporting our teachers in being able to meet the needs of all learners in the classroom in some way or another, and that takes a lot of time, learning, support, and having parent partners who really support that as well is just so important. And I went on the journey in middle school with one of my children, going through evaluation process, and it was very scary, and feeling like your child might not be where they need to be is just gonna be very, very emotional, and I think it's also important for parents to know that it's not a resource for others, it's a resource for all, and how our students learn. Some students are really great at one thing, and they really need help with another, and I really love the idea of making that more for everybody, and a way to connect and share in the learning opportunities for our kids, and not have it be, it's only for those kids. It's for all of us, and, you know, there's definitely some undiagnosed ADHD in this person right here, and if you spend any time with me, you know that. But we learn, we create tools, and we support our kids in being their best selves, in whatever that looks like. And sometimes that takes advocacy, and I think a lot about what I sometimes call the secret handshake that I worry about in Lennox, that some people don't feel like they have the agency to come up and ask for what they need. So having a group of parents that can help with that is super important. Not everybody feels like they can walk in an office and ask for what they need, so thank you for that, too. And the teaching of how this works, the know your rights. I work with students with special education as a child advocate, so being able to do that is super important, and thank you. Kim Winger and I are community engagement, so I don't know if it's okay with you to say that if you want to just engage on some, running some ideas around, I'm happy to be available. I don't want to voluntold Kim, but if you, my information's on the website, and I'm happy to do a coffee and chat to just see if it's something that goes with us or somewhere else. I'm happy to be available.
I would love that. I'm grateful for that.
Thanks. Yeah, and I, Brian, this might be partly a question for you also, but in terms of when there is stuff incoming, is, are you the right person for it to all run through? Are there others at the schools who should be?
Since it's, you know, as our, as needs have evolved, you know, the parents are really supposed to facilitate, you know, like dictate agendas and all those things, but I'm sort of the liaison between anything else that happens in the district. So anything that we might want to program for or do, you know, they can collect some of that doing the groundwork, doing it, but then can come to me and say, this is what we would like, and this is what we have, and then if we need to get into other discussions, we can, you know, further explore and make things happen. And if we have to pull other people in, or then we want to come back here and just also share out what we're doing, then that could be a venue to also share things that we're tackling or doing.
Brian's been great at that. We're trying to take a little bit of that parent responsibility away from him, considering, or all of him, not away from him, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, Daniel. The president.
My apologies for being late. I'm sure we had some good representation here, so just wanted to thank Brian for making some time here, so that we can all address the committee. Thank you.
Could you just tell us who you are?
I'm sorry, my name is Daniel Bichard. I've been working with Brian for what, four years now? Almost four years now. And we have some slowly, but we do have some greater participation, so prayers for one, for attending, we're getting the word out, and some more, more parents have been attending, so we're expecting to be able to come back and show you some progress. Thank you.
I have a question. So, I mean, this is a, you present a wonderful resource of both, you know, experience and having actually lived in through these situations. You know, I wonder, is, is there an opportunity for, I remember when, I was just wondering if you have any confidentiality hurdles in your outreach program? In other words, can you reach out to the 95 people that are on IEPs directly, or is that a confidentiality?
Good question, sir. As far as the parents, we do have a barrier there with the confidentiality, but that's where Brian comes in as our liaison, and if we have some information that we need to get out to the parents, whether it's just those parents on IEPs or to the whole, to the whole group of parents in the Lennox School District, Brian's able to accommodate that.
That's great. And is there, you know, a potential resource for parents who are perhaps wondering whether their child should be on an IEP or a 504 or something along those?
That is, that is a good question. One thing that we have recently done was we provided a flyer to Brian so that parents would be able to have that upon registering at school or having that provided to them so that if they wanted to attend a meeting or ask questions, they had a contact, then from there they would be able to seek those resources.
That's great.
At the beginning of the year, we send out a forum with all other things, it goes to folks in the community, all the parents, and, you know, they can either sign up or at least they know about it. Now we have a sort of a better brochure, flyer that we'll be able to put at different places and do it different times of the year. And anybody, any parent is certainly welcome to attend anywhere in the journey, they don't have to have somebody, but if you're on the board, you do have to have somebody, one of your students has to be on an IEP if you're on the board.
That's a good question. One of our ideas is to do these certain, talk about certain workshops, or maybe do recorded video content or things, because it is a private matter. Some people want to, are open, I'm too much, so I'm the person that does walk in and ask for the things too much. So it's like, we have different kinds of people and different ways of learning with parents, and so those, that kind of topic, like, do you think, do you think your kid needs this, is maybe a great topic for us to write down as a workshop, or like a video or a specific meeting topic for people to come to. So I welcome that, too, and maybe you and I, or Ronnie and Morgan and all of us, or whoever, not me, can discuss a way to like make a list of those things that maybe we're not thinking of because we're already into this or something. I remember when I first started my journey, I did everything wrong, and I didn't know it existed, and I always got like angry about it, and there's no reason to feel that, it's just fear. And so if we could help alleviate that from not only the parents and the students, but also the teachers, and it's really supporting everybody, because it's a big, it steps outside of the classroom and it's out of the school.
Something else we've been doing is the flyer that we made, just spreading it anywhere that'll accept it. I've given it to the school adjustment counselors at the high school and middle school before I even told the group that it was finished. I gave it to the Morris School Adjustment Counselors. That way, if they're interacting with a parent and they, you know, we can't see who's in those meetings, but if they're like, hey, this might be a good resource for you and a good source of community, and you can ask these questions to these parents, here's the flyer, and soon you'll be able to share the website link, which will have all of our contact information, once he signs up and tells me he's game for it, so that you can email us directly or send us a text message and ask us the questions, because sometimes you don't even know how to get your child evaluated. I was lucky that my child came through the PDC, so he was fully evaluated before he even got to the school. A lot of parents are like me with my first child, where I'm like, I really think she needs an evaluation, and I have no idea how to go about that. You know, three months into her in school, I finally figured out, okay, I have to request a formal evaluation. If they just come and chat with us, we can teach them about that.
I would like to, I know from all of us, thank especially Principal Kelly and Principal Saul and you, Brian, because the amount of time that I personally have spent on just my son and our family is like outrageous, I think, and so I don't know how, like, I know, we also want to support that, like, we know these are times, situations, and budget things, too, and so we want to make it this helpful for everybody involved.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. That's great.
Thank you for your time.
All right, should we swing back up to MSBA?
Yes.
We saw a certain person.
And just, and just before we do, that couldn't have been a warmer or more welcoming commercial for the group, really, truly. And I also appreciate Director Kelly's work in getting us in line with the things that we are supposed to be doing, and not just the, not just the letter of the law, but the spirit of it. So thank you, and thank you. And we have Bob Vaughn, who is the chair of the School Building Committee, who's going to give us an MSBA update.
So thank you, Mr. Chair, Dr. Collins, the school committee for having me here tonight, and sorry that I was late. I had 6:30 at the town hall, and my
Oh, no. That answers the question whether we still have highlighted you in the location.
I didn't look at the agenda, I just, I just had to put it down.
You have some habits to update.
Anyway, I want to give you an update on the School Building Committee, where we're at. Going into December, we were, well, originally we had been thinking that we would be going to the town meeting in December, asking for money for the owner's project manager and final design. And that's where we were until December 13th or before that, when final design. And that's where we were until December 13th or before that when Bill was notified that MSBA was going to invite us into the process, which is about a decade early to the weeks anticipated would happen. So on December 13th, Friday, December 13th, we had we were invited in. And then next week, there was a meeting with the 22 districts that will invite into the eligibility period. Now, there are like nine different modules that go along with being part of the MSBA process. And this is just the first. And there are five or six deliverables that we have to do. One is a third gate sign off sheet that you're going to abide by all these regulations and laws. It's signed by Bill Orne and Jay Green. The next is the formation of the School Building Committee, which is we have to do it formally according to whatever our town bylaws say. And it appears that that's goes through the permanent building committee to either appoint or designate to Dr. Collins or select board or somebody with power to create the committee. We've been working since 2021 without having that, except for the school committee of, you know, creating us in 2021. We haven't had that kind of formal MSBA in premature. So so those are the first two. Then we have to submit an educational enrollment document, which covers really just Lennox students, but it covers housing starts, housing permits, the number of houses sold in Lennox, number of condos sold in Lennox over 10 years, any new projects that, you know, housing projects that are in the works, you know, because they're trying to get information to come up with an enrollment figure that will then dictate how large a construction they would they would help support financially. That's not really our concern because we know our numbers aren't going to help us because of 40% of our students coming from out of town. But it's one of the things that they require. And then we have a maintenance and capital, capital projects, capital improvement document. And both of these, we can fill it online. But one of the things we learn later in the day on the 13th, Bill got an email because we thought we have a 270 day period to complete this process. And we thought it probably started on December 13th. Well, little did we realize till that afternoon when he said our starting date would be May 1st. So this is pushing everything, you know, much further down the road than we had anticipated. So then we and at that meeting, they had, I think it was like the 16th or 17th of December with the 20 districts, they said, this is a five to seven year process. Also was a little bit, it didn't follow the timeline that we were kind of working under. You know, we were expecting potentially, if everyone went along with it, that we might be building by the middle of 2026. And with the MSBA five to seven year process, that doesn't look like it. It looks like it could be another 18 months or so, or who knows, construction might start. So that we we asked that if we asked our representative from MSBA, the person who's going to be working with us throughout the process, if we could have a separate meeting. So in January, Jeremiah and Bill and Melissa and I met with a couple of folks met remotely. And we asked if we could be moved if our starting date could move up. Because, for example, Pittsfield's starting date is like February 3rd, you know, everyone has a different starting date. They said, no, that's that's carved in stone. And then we said, well, could we at least fill in the documents that we need to have so when May 1st rolls around? Because May 1st is actually our town meeting, too. And the fifth item that we have to submit to them is a town vote of money for an owner's project manager and feasibility study. And so our plan now is that we would, you don't have to do these five items in order. You have you have 30 days to do this and 60 days and 90 days and 270 days to do the various five different steps. But you can do, you know, and we said, we're going to ask for the money, whatever amount we determine it to be, we're going to ask for that money on May 1st, which is also the starting date of our eligibility period. And we're hoping to have all the documents pretty much ready so that we can submit them within a five to 10 day period of May 1st, hoping to speed the process up for us. So so here we are, talking to the folks from MSBA. And we said, they only meet the board only meets every other month. So they would be June, August, October, December. So we said, if we get all these documents into you, can, do you think we might be approved for the next step by maybe at your June meeting? And they just laughed. They said, in the best scenario, you might be looking at the October meeting. And seems to be that the hang up is the enrollment document. Because you actually, we submit all our stuff to them, they run it through various algorithms that or whatever. They have a whole formula and process for doing that. And then we have a discussion with them. And we know that discussion is not going to result in our having a 60,000 or 150,000 square foot building, you know, and that's not what we're looking for. But but they said, that's the thing that slows everyone down because everyone's getting in line to have that discussion. So it seems that trying to speed up our sending documents into them may, you know, may not result in us having a quicker, a quicker process going forward. So we met the School Building Committee met a couple of weeks ago, I guess, because we're meeting again on Wednesday. So I guess it was two weeks ago, to to kind of plan, you know, what we need to do between now and May 1st. And we want to do a lot of public outreach. We want to have at least two, maybe three public meetings faced, you know, maybe one in February, one in March, one in April. We want to create a website that people can look at to get questions answered. And so to that end, last week, I met with Randy McLeod, who showed me how to create a website and the website's created. And it's subject to the approval of the School Building Committee. So it's not published yet, but I'll show the building committee. And I I created a lot of frequently answered questions, frequently asked questions, and I answered them for mostly in some cases. And I added pictures and I put documents and all kinds of stuff. So, you know, Randy really got me started, showed me what to do. I fiddled with it. I had some things that worked, things that didn't work. Eventually I got them to all work. And I can't wait to show the School Building Committee this potential website because this is going to be something that while I'm creating it now for the public, you know, to see, it will continue on as the project goes along. We'll be adding to it. And ultimately, we hope there'll be pictures of construction going up there and, you know, all kinds of things that the public can see at any time. And another thing I had suggested was that we might send a postcard out to all Lennox households with the with the link so that everyone, you know, has a chance to go to that website and go from there. So but anyway, we're, we also had an hour and a half discussion about, do we work with MSBA? Or we still try to do it ourselves? Does working with MSBA and pushing the starting date of construction down the road, does that, you know, add a million dollars a year to the cost? The town has all its safety building, water treatment plant, and the library that are all ahead of us in line for money. So there's also some concern, could we could we phase back what we do and kind of phase one, maybe get the building bill connected and some and the renovations done and maybe hold off on the locker rooms and hold off on some of the other things. So we, you know, we recognize that the town finances are, you know, are going to be hit, you know, pretty hard by, you know, taxpayers will be hit pretty hard by a number of projects, you know, that are ahead of us. And we want to, we want to work with the town to come up with the best solution. And that may be that we go ahead with the full scale of what we'd like to do. It may be also if we work with MSBA, the roof of this building would come due around 2028. That would be 30 years, 2027, maybe, which you can't even apply for their funding to help with the roof project until 30 years. So, you know, we asked them if something like the roof came in, if the timing were such that the roof could be part of that, the 30 years came in, could that be rolled into the project? And and they, I think they felt that, you know, was likely that that could be. They didn't have definite answer on that. But so here we are, still shooting for to ask us some money on May 1st, but maybe working on parallel tracks, maybe an MSBA track and do it ourselves track until such point as we have to make a decision, you know, what seems to be the best decision going forward. So there we have it. So and I'm sorry that I I'm glad, actually, things were out of order here so that I could hear the CPAT presentation, too.
That's great.
I don't know. Did you do your presentation on?
Yes.
So you got yours in, too?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Well, I think, you know, I think I'd like to come back again once I've got, once we've decided to make this website live and show it on one of these meetings. I'm not sure when that might be because I'm going to be going to visit some grandkids in Minnesota in a week or July. And you meet probably every week now or so because of the budget.
Or a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Is the so through the MSBA process, is the addition that we had been envisioning a MSBA compliant plan, what what counts versus doesn't count as an MSBA project?
Well, as we discussed, you know, before, when I was on the committee and you had asked about doing a feasibility study, no. The feasibility study that we had done was very comprehensive. And it includes much of what would be included in a MSBA feasibility study. And if we go, if we go forward and decide to work with MSBA, we get the owner's project manager money, and the owner's project manager then helps us select a firm to do the feasibility. Could be the same firm that just did it. But whatever firm would get hired, whatever architectural firm would get hired for the MSBA feasibility study can work for the documents that were that have already been created. And so we feel that A is not going to cost us anywhere near as much. And, you know, so your other question was, is the building that was designed initially designed, is it, the science classrooms would probably have to be bigger to read MSBA. MSBA typically looks at about a 1,400 square foot science classroom. You can have two next to each other and share some space in between. But they'll look first a little bit bigger than we have designed to make more like, I think we have maybe a 1,100 square feet. There might be a couple of other little things that we might have to be tweaked. So so there would have to be some redesign work.
Yeah. Well, I guess my thought was bigger picture, especially if with our resident only enrollment numbers, MSBA would say this building is already too big. Are they going to accept a project that proposes an addition of new square footage that we don't need based on our resident population?
Well, that's a good question. I don't think that's the case. I mean, they put us, you know, they obviously selected, there were 54 or something projects that submitted SOIs this year. 22 were selected to go forward, maybe it was 47 or something, wherever, you know, about half of them were selected. And so, you know, we obviously met their criteria for that we have a certain amount of need. That's a structural need.
Right. Were we submitting our proposed addition? Or we were just saying, look at our building, we haven't?
No, no, no. We were, we were, what we submitted on the SOI was just kind of, these are our current conditions.
Right.
Yeah. So, no, the the feasibility study, the proposed, that came up, you know, we submitted the SOI in March of 2024 before we even had the firm hired to to do the architectural work.
So I guess my, and we don't know the answer, we can, well, we should figure it out. But my concern is that we were selected on the basis of this building that we're in being one that needed improvement. And we're actually going to pretty much leave the building, but just add more square footage seems like just a very different. I don't know how MSBA evaluates something like that.
Well, when MSBA is involved in the core project, the feasibility study phase requires that you have a renovation option, a rebuild option, an addition option. So you have those three. And the building would be part of the addition, probably with some renovation in this building as well. But the feasibility has to give us more than just one option. It has to have at least those three. And I've been, my previous experience, we had, I think, eight options to choose from in the end, at the end of the feasibility time.
And then what we and then what we get by virtue of being the MSBA process is they pay for a share based on a complicated calculation of that which they agree we need.
Right. And and there are things, you know, in our, in our initial proposal, we were talking about putting a circle out behind here, you know, the buses would go. They wouldn't cover any of that kind of work, you know. Site work going along with a new building, yes, they would be part of what they would pay for. But there are things that they don't include in their reimbursement. So if we want those, we do those on our, you know, totally on our nickel.
They start at, they start everyone at 30, 31% reimbursement from them. And then depending on the way that we go, they, it goes up or it goes down.
Yeah, I mean, everyone starts at 31. And actually, when we spoke to them, when they came out and visited us in September of 2021, I think they told us that our percentage would be 41 or 2%. So I, so while everyone starts at 31, Lennox may have a higher number than we start from. But then when you actually figure out when construction is actually going on and they cover this, they don't cover that, whatever, that we've been told that we could expect it to be more in the 25% reimbursement range. But, you know, that's an unknown. And we don't find out their reimbursement rate until about the third or fourth module in the process. So it takes a while to nail it down.
And that and that percentage does change annually. The 41 was a few years ago. And they don't have this year's percentages yet. I did ask that question. So we don't know what it would be. But typically, there's a decrease from it because of just the way that the formula works, that not everything is fully covered.
And the other, another component that we, in reading page 603 of the 708 page document, I realized that the feasibility study, that we can only, you know, well, we knew this in advance. You can only do work on this building up to a 30% of its value. So if the building's valued at 16 billion, all we can do is about 4.8 million of renovations to this building. The other build, the outside building doesn't, wouldn't count. That's separate. But anything here. And we had, you know, and our building right now is valued at a little over 16 million. And we had more than that in the renovations that we were talking about. But the the assessment of the high school was last done 1997. Public buildings don't always get reassessed because they're not going to be taxed. So we've asked the assessors to bring the firm back in sometime in between April and June and do a reassessment of the high school. Because, you know, we would be limited to 30% of that cost. Otherwise, we have to bring everything, you know, $20 million of stuff up to up to code, the current code. They're they're fine as if we don't do more than 30%, but. They're, they're fine as if we don't do more than 30%, but who, and that's, that was a direction we didn't want to go. And that's why we were talking about building, building behind and just making a connection. And all of that was coming in, you know, that was all very doable without triggering the 30%. If all we did was the new building and the renovations of the high school wing, we would fall, you know, within the parameters of work. We couldn't then do the locker rooms. But we expect that $16 million valuation will, will go up somewhat significantly. So there we have it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks a lot. Thank you all, those of you on the committee.
Did you look at them? Do they exist?
Dr. Ames.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to, foundations.
Can I snuggle you a?
Always want me to snuggle you. He's tired.
I can see it.
Look at this way. Can you see? There you go. This is kind of.
It'll be easier to see if he, if the lights down a little bit. Okay, so we're going to talk about the FY '26 initial operating budget. And I know that I sent a presentation over the weekend, one on Friday, another one over the weekend. This is again a different presentation. So we were waiting on some numbers to hit today and we have that information. It's included in the presentation. So the budget process, what we've done to date is look at inflation projections, see where some things like utilities, supplies, just level service, how much we expect to have to pay more for the same. Special education needs are discussed. We have building and department meetings. We look at staffing needs, any changes, retirements and so on, and any new initiatives. And we review column movement and step advancement and any retirements are calculated into the new numbers for next year. So what we have this year for contractual obligations, which is a very big part of our budget, health benefits were voted today to be increased by 16%. That's every active plan for employees. So if you're on the HMO, the PPO, the POS, 16% across the board. And as well as if you're an early retiree, not yet or unable to receive Medicare and you're on an HMO, PPO, POS plan, those rates are going up 16% effective July 1st. Student transportation is in the fourth year of a five-year contract. And this year's increases 4%. Certified professionals, that's what we call Unit A here, teachers, school adjustment counselors, psychologists, that whole group. We're in negotiations with Unit A currently. That's ongoing. Custodial unit, it is a negotiation year. The new contract term will begin 7/1 of '25. So the start of this new budget will begin their new year and we'll be negotiating, beginning negotiations with them shortly. And then Unit C, which are the paraprofessional, instructional paraprofessionals, food services, administrative assistants. This is the final year of a three-year contract, '26 is. So we will begin negotiations during 2026 fiscal year for that unit. So this is where we stand right now with our gross operating. And please know that these are the initial numbers. I think some things are in flux if we're hiring new employees this year. Some of the salaries may adjust depending on employees that are hired in this current year or get hired before the budget is approved. So you can see that instructionally, elementary and secondary small increases, even with some new initiatives, at one new initiative at the secondary level, the increase is 1.31%. And that's because we had some staff, some personnel leave and new people come in and fluctuations in salary levels occurred. Student services, we are seeing a drop in needs, mostly in the placement area. Last year, you recall that we had a very large increase. It's leveled off at this point. And we're seeing a decrease to, in the whole student services, which is more than just placements, but administration, instructional and needs of 134, 782. Other school services, which are the 504, employees and department and the ESL or ELL department, that's got a small increase of 4.39%. Technology has some new initiatives. Randy was here talking about artificial intelligence and just some renewals of his licensing and software that we utilize brought his increase to 48,000 or 11.8%. Central administration has most of the new initiatives this year with the curriculum assessment and instructional department focusing on a budget that includes professional development, some software, survey software, and also supplies for that department. So you're seeing a little growth there. But there's also an increase with a couple of new initiatives that you'll see on some slides down further. Operations and maintenance, we're looking at about 5%, almost 6% increase. We have an electrical contract that is going to out to bid as well as a heating contract. The heating contract will be over the summer and take place effective October. So we're guessing at those rates, but I think that the increase that's applied should be adequate. And the electrical is happening this spring. So if we get that before we go to final approval, I'll adjust those numbers accordingly. And then because we have unsettled contracts this year, the reserve you'll notice has increased quite a bit by 553%. But that's to cover unsettled contracts and some reserve for special ed services or placements, which totals about 75 of that. And 10,000 for technology in the reserve. Everything else is related to salaries.
And so Melissa, in terms of what's in the elementary, secondary and so forth, does that take step and column movements into account, but at the existing contract rate?
Yes, yes. So all of the salaries are moved to step and column, longevity added or increased.
So right, so it's basically if the 2024, 25 contract were literally just copied, pasted as 25, 26, people moved up. This is what it would look like. Any increases in the contract or what's held in?
Yes, yes. So major budget drivers. You know, when we talk about the budget, it's 80% benefits and salaries. So it's not surprising that that's the largest amount here, unsettled contracts and benefits. 75, almost 78% of the increase. And the increase, I have a note at the bottom, you can't read it, I apologize for that. But the increase is on, the percentage is on the total increase of the budget, which includes benefits because we have included them in here. The budget you saw earlier only had contingency, not benefits. So it's off a higher increase number. So 75% contracts and benefits, 24% for program enhancements, needs and new initiatives.
And so the benefit is like 400 or 500K?
Yes, you're very good. It's 400 and I want to say 29,000 at this point. So here's our gross operating by expenditures by program. Didn't we just see this slide? Sorry about that, I went up instead of down. Okay, so this is the three main areas. We have contracts and benefits. 1,147,560 is the number in this budget right now. The increases are listed there for insurances. And it's important to note that active plans are from July 1 until June 30. But if you're a retiree on MEDX, which is the supplemental plan to Medicare, you are on a calendar year. So those increases happen January 1 and continue through December 31st. So what happens is we have the rate for the first six months of this budget through December 31st. We're guessing or estimating on the increase for the second six months, which I have in there at 10%. This year it was 19%. But I think 10% is adequate at this point. Our program enhancements and needs, we talked about in our ESER grant and that now being completely expended and closed. We had been using ESER to pay for our summer schools at Morris, any credit recovery at LMHS and special education summer school. So those have moved back into ESER and the total for that is 54, I mean, back from ESER into operating, the total is 54,000. Special education, there's a 75,000 for the potential placement and or needs, 69,000 in curriculum, instruction and assessment. But 30,000 of that 69 is for district-wide professional development in the superintendent's budget. We haven't had that and we find that we do, we do more, the programs are more substantial. We do need to have that funding to continue. There's an increase in field trips. Nature's Classroom was talked about a few weeks ago at the school committee. So that's one here and that's about 20,000 of this increase. And the DC trip has an increased request of 6,000 total, 3,000 per department.
So to be clear, the Nature's Classroom, the whole amount was put in there? So maybe completely covered for the sixth grade class, it's not supplemental?
It's not supplemental, Jeremiah, you can confirm that?
That's completely for next, for next year to cover all of Nature's Classroom?
Yes, my understanding is, is completely covered.
For that, for that field trip? And the DC field trip is, is that going to be completely covered now too? Or is it, or is it going to be supplement?
There, there is some expense to the students and I'm not quite sure where that's ending up this year for the students. But how much?
225.
Meals, I remember.
For meals.
So is the Nature's Classroom the only field trip that will be completely covered?
I think so, yes.
For the students, we, we just picked that out, right?
Well, that's, that's new this year.
Yeah, I understand.
It's being added this year, so.
Okay, I guess that was my understanding, okay. All right, I got it.
So, go ahead. Oh, so Nature's Classroom, we've covered completely. DC trip is covered completely except for out-of-pocket meals. For the students, other field trips continue to run as there's sometimes some cost, but those are all day trips anyway?
Yeah, and there's a few that are, I, I can't remember which, which classrooms go, but a grade goes to Boston, one New York City, and there is maybe one that's an overnight, but not a lengthy like the DC trip or Nature's Classroom is a weekend. And there's 30,000 in the central administration to cover some overlap for retirement that's occurring in the central administration at the end of this budget period. So Bill, I don't know if you want to talk about the new initiatives? Oh, wait, I missed that. So we also have new initiatives, the middle school ELA, we've talked about a few years now. We do have, we have included that FTE in LMHS's budget and a grant writer, central administration grant writer to help pull in additional funding for needs in the district.
You, you may recall that the admin team and I, we worked and primarily with Director Kelly as the spearhead on our MTSS plan with, there was several initiatives we were hoping to implement and we are significantly ahead. It was just fate, it wasn't that it was great planning, but chance favors the prepared mind and we were prepared and chance showed its face. And so we're, we're ahead on that timeline, that four-year timeline, we're ahead. And so it allows us, we have a math, a middle school math interventionist, but it allows us to hopefully be able to, one year earlier than we anticipated, bring on the, an ELA middle school interventionist. And this will, it says here, significantly boost reading and writing skills. And the research shows that targeted intervention helps close any achievement gaps. So we're, we're looking to balance what we have in math with ELA for the middle schoolers as they transition from Morris to high school. And then the second one is a 0.5 grant writer, which we fully expect will more than, more than pay for itself, the position. But we do need to start with, with a salary before we have the position. But then moving forward, we expect that being able to pursue grant opportunities greater than, than we can right now with our small admin team to be able to. Right now, we let a number of them go because we just don't have the capacity to, to write all of them and follow up on all of them. And with this position, we believe that we'll be able to bring in far more than $40,000. And the person that we're looking to, to hire for this has already written a couple of grants that have exceeded their salary for us. So those are the two initiatives.
Does that person work remotely?
That person does not currently work remotely. But with the grant piece, we would look at having the 50%. It wouldn't matter, it's really, the proof is in the pudding, it wouldn't matter to us where they wrote the grants from.
And this slide just gives you a visual of the breakdown of where the budget increases are coming from. So benefits and contracts, the largest piece of the pie. Program enhancements, and then the new initiatives are 7%. So like we do every year, we look at all of our funding that we have in our special revenues, revolving funds, special ed reimbursements, and determine the fund status as we sit, how much we need to offset the operating in the current year and then what that remains for us for the next year. for us for the next year. And in looking at that, school choice, I believe that we can increase at this point to two million and twenty-five thousand, which is an increase of seventy-five thousand over the one point nine five oh amount of this fiscal year. When we presented the budget last year, the circuit breaker reimbursement we were receiving was ninety-six-five, so that's what we apply to the twenty-five budget. But you recall that we talked about higher increases in special ed, and that the circuit breaker reimbursement would bring in more funding that we could apply to this budget. So you see the difference there, we're applying the two-twelve, nine-seventy-two that we're getting this year, which is an increase of one-sixteen, four-seventy-two in the circuit breaker application. Non-choice tuition, these are Richmond students, and we've been using one-sixty-five a year. We had, I think, four or five new students this year, and we do have about roughly the same amount coming that we think next year. We had seven, I believe, view the school today, but typically it's about five or so that do end up coming. And that fund, I think, is not going to sustain the one-sixty-five, so I want to drop it down slowly a little bit each year. But we made it up in the other two funds, so it's a good year to start that. Pre-K tuition, same thing. We have, this is used to offset pre-K salaries, both instructional and support, and also supplement things like field trips and supplies for the pre-K classroom. So that currently is dropped down to sixty thousand. The Duffin Theater, we can up it a little bit, so we're anticipating utilizing fifteen. And miscellaneous and use of facilities, total twenty-eight thousand. So that's an increase year over year of a hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Is the Duffin increase based on anticipating more usage, or were the rate increases?
I look at what we have now, not anticipating, because I'd like, I like to apply what we have now, because anything could change after.
Has there been rate increases to the Duffin Theater?
I don't think so.
Or rentals in a while?
No.
No, they had a very busy summer, and I think fall, and probably going to pick up again. So the fund is, is growing.
Okay.
Any other questions on this slide?
Tell me, tell me, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask about the non-choice tuition. How, remind me, how many students is, are, do we have today?
Um, I think we, I want to say between seven.
And what is our reimbursement?
It's a tuition.
What is that tuition?
It's thirteen thousand and some change.
So how do we get to this number?
There is a fund balance that's in the fund. It's not, it's not students by what we're receiving today.
Okay.
There's a fund that sits there.
Okay.
It's like a checking, it kind of stays there.
Okay.
You offset expenses, the balance stays there, you add to it.
Okay.
So that's why it's higher than.
Gotcha, okay.
What you calculated.
All right, thanks.
Eleven.
They're not, the, I think it's lower than that, there are some choice students.
Is it that the net is lower, because we all, we pay some out, or is this just a gross tuition in?
That's a gross tuition in.
Okay.
That we receive from Richmond. And I'll have to look at the numbers, if it's eleven, I can increase that in the next one, but I know that we transport five or six, and I didn't.
I don't think it was very many, I, I, yeah, I was thinking it was about six, maybe.
So as we think about getting more grant revenue in with a grant writer, is that all, would we be planning to move operating costs off budget, or should we be adding a grant line here to start keeping track of it?
So grants are separate from special, these sort of revenues. Grants are typically one year, they don't move with you if you don't spend it unless it's an entitlement grant. You have twenty-two months to spend those. The, the grants typically, you can find grants for existing expenses. Typically, it's new initiatives. So if we had a new initiative come forward, we wouldn't necessarily have to add it here. The grant would offset that in coming years. But there are grants where you can use it to offset existing expenses, they're just limited in how much, so it could be ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, that you could spend on existing. And then the balance has to be in a certain other area.
Said in a totally legal, contractually compliant way, surely it is also the case that large amounts of grant funding ultimately go toward, in effect, funding the operating budget of a school district?
So, yes, there are instances, entitlement grants. Title I, special ed, two-forty. Title I pays for the salary of a title I teacher, and one point two of three title I support people. They've been here for a while. It's a grant that, though, you have to spend on certain things, and those sorts of grants, those certain things already exist, for the most part. The two-forty grant, special ed, we spend that on a lot of contracted services, out of district tuition, to offset what we have to put in the operating budget, so that's existing.
Well, I guess what I'm wondering is, if we're, if we're paying a, a new grant writer, and we expect it to pay for itself in a sense, it, it only pay, it won't pay for itself if we have to launch new initiatives for, I mean, we'll get lots of new initiatives, but it feels like there should be a way in which some share of the grant money we would be seeking with a new grant writer would be offsetting expenses we have now.
You can offset current expenses with, it's typically maxed at ten percent of the grant can go to administrative, which would be the grant writer, or indirect costs like utilities, if you have an after-school program that is grant-funded, you can, you can deduct ten percent of that grant to help pay for the electricity, supplies, things like that. So there are, there's limits, but you can do it.
Some of the, some of these might support, like, there's been a couple that come around that have, for instance, like, professional development embedded, right? We had the new IP coming around, and we were able to write the two-seventy-four grant, which did pay for some of our initial hit on switching over to Power School, and some of the PD for the, the new IP training. So that was a case of where some of that did, but they come around specifically aimed, and then you pick up the grant, like, there's some mental health ones, Dr. Collins and I were, we were looking at early on, we just, it was just too cumbersome. But it probably would have done some to alleviate, like, some professional development, some other areas, but yes, it would have probably been also taking out a little bit else along with it, but there would have been some opportunity there.
And so even if it, I guess I'm just wondering, as we budget going forward, how should we reflect what we expect to be increased grant receipt in a way that successfully reduces the budget cost?
So, grants are completely separate from this process, but similar to ESER where we've noted, this is higher because ESER is now completed, or this is lower because we are using ESER to pay point one-five of their salary. So you see it that way, that would continue, but the grants and the whole management of it is completely outside of this. So when you look at this budget, we have about four, currently, four hundred and eighty thousand. It's in that ballpark of additional funding that is grant-funded, that you're not seeing in any of these numbers. You're just seeing a decrease because we have the grant for the title I people and things like that.
Okay.
So the initial net budget, including benefits, so we have the gross operating, the middle column, or the third column in is, no column, initial budget for twenty-six. Gross operating total is sixteen point four million. Application of revenues of two, almost two point five, two point four nine oh makes the net budget thirteen nine. Benefits, four million ninety-five thousand now. That includes Berkshire County assessment for our employees who belong to Berkshire County Retirement Board and not MTRS, we do have to pay an assessment. It includes active health, retiree health, FICA taxes, and health insurance. So that's not all health insurance that you're seeing there, but the increase is four twenty-nine, eleven percent. So the total initial appropriation request, last year it was sixteen point eight million, this year it's eighteen million seventy-one, which is an increase of one point two million, or seven point two one percent.
Going back to the benefits for a minute, does that include that sixteen percent rate increase in it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So with the benefits, what I do is I take employees or retirees, both. So if an employee is retiring, I look to see if they're going to go to Medex, which is a cheaper plan than an active plan, and I move them for the months that they will be, if they tell us they're retiring at some point during this budget cycle. I move them into the appropriate category, so that's why you don't see a straight sixteen percent increase, because they're, I'm moving people as they move during the course of the year.
Okay.
To get a lower rate. Last year, the town applied three hundred thousand of free cash. We haven't had a conversation about this this year, so that's why it's not there. So the, the total appropriation request for the initial budget is eighteen million seventy-one thousand, one twenty-five, which is an increase of one point five million, or nine point one five percent, just shy of ten. And we had this slide last year, so I thought I would include twenty-five's final budget, and where we sit with inflationary figures, and we are still trending under inflation for the twenty, this current budget, the twenty-five budget that was adopted last May. This is a new slide. A cherry, the cherry sheet is what we receive that tells us what we can anticipate as the budget moves through, the governor's budget moves through their process at the state level, what we can anticipate for revenues. So Chapter Seventy, Education Receipts, that's based on all Lenox students that reside in Lenox. Whether they come here or not, you receive funding, so much per pupil, per resident, for Chapter Seventy-eight. And next year, in this first budget, you see there's three more budgets that it has to, three more committees it has to go through before we get to the final number, but right now, Chapter Seventy is, I think they're utilizing the sixty dollar per student, so it's one point four two eight. Some districts are different needs, and Chapter Seventy is based on needs.
We get that.
A district that has higher needs and maybe more low income, they would receive more, it's a different formula. But Lenox is one of the minimum aid districts. So the town receives that money, we don't have, it goes right to the town, and then the school choice is estimated at this point to be one point eight nine three million, received in twenty-six, could be used for the twenty-seven budget. So next steps, move forward with Unit A and Unit D negotiations, continue to monitor retirement, sometimes we get retirements at all times of the year, power movements, and any new personnel that are either starting this year due to an opening, or already committed for next year, that will be factored into budget numbers as we move along. I'll adjust utilities, if necessary, with the new contracts, I won't know the heating until the summer, so that is an estimate, but electrical, we should have something, hopefully this spring. Review special revenue fund balances, and adjust the revenue application accordingly. So if we do have eleven, and we're going to receive in a hundred and forty versus ninety, that may change the, the number I use for the offset in the, the non-choice tuition fund. Then we will also present to this full school committee, the program budgets. Morris will come, LMMHHS, Technology, Central Admin, and then the capital budget will be presented at some point. I'm not quite sure of the date, but it's on the document.
And some of those numbers, you're still working through, right? You're still working to?
Yeah, these are initial numbers, and, yes, yes.
Not that I'm asking for major change, I'm just saying.
I think, I think the benefits are set, there's not much I can do there at this point, but everything else we'll continue to monitor.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it, I'll put this up on the website. I know it's different from the one you received Saturday, so thank you for your patience.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, stay tuned.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Who was on finance up there? And me.
Warren is active issue.
That's right.
Yes.
I just don't show up.
You don't have.
All right, I think we have one more, do we, on the foundation grant?
Yes, the IW Foundation is looking to give our skiing team jackets, purchase team jackets and embroidery, they have made a donation of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars toward that. This is something they've done in previous years as well. Because it is a donation, it requires a school committee vote.
Did we ever find out what the IW Foundation is, and why they buy us ski jackets?
We did, our coach has a, a relationship, I think, with the, with the organization, which we're very happy that happens, but I believe last year, the committee had me look it up, and I did, and I apologize, I do not remember the.
Well, I don't either, so there you go. But we were happy with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, very generous with us in this gift, and it's been going on for quite a number of years, so, thanks to Coach McKnight for bringing him into the fold, and.
I'll make a motion to approve the donation of, can you repeat the?
Ten, uh, ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, as presented.
Second? All in favor?
I, sorry.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, yeah.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Final item for this evening, community engagement update. I know Ronnie and Kim, you'd held some convenings, and perhaps have some, some information to share back from.
Well, we do, and our convening was really the initial one, and we kind of went down the path of focusing on student engagement, and Kim was very focused on wanting to work on this Odyssey of the Mind, and she's been using her community engagement time at Morris School around that, which I think is great, because also there's a, let's do this now, but let's think about how this can be an enhanced program for broader activities and learning and engagement for students, that you identified as this being something that could potentially really make a big difference. So Kim's working on that, and. So Kim's working on that, and we haven't really convened again. But we see each other and check in, but she's kind of doing that. And then I did, wanted to do some work at the middle high school. In December, I had sort of a check-in with the students meeting, similar to what we did a couple of years ago of sort of, what do you think's going well? What do you think we need to work on? So we're gonna talk with administration about how they want to follow up on that. But one of the other major things that I've been wanting to work on for quite a while, and there's just really good reasons why, but we just haven't gotten our student advisory committee up and running pursuant to the Mass General laws that require that. And, you know, again, it was started and then different administration turnovers. We've had a whole team that's been working overtime to do a lot of very important things. So that's not in any way meant as a criticism, but is meant that that's a very, it's an excellent opportunity for a group of five students to be elected by their peers, to then elect amongst themselves our representative, have them at our meetings. There's a lot of training. There's a handbook from MASC that tells them how to do that. And there's opportunities for them to go to training. So I met, had a great meeting with our vice principal, Marcus Haas, to go over kind of the, this is what we need to do. How do we think we want to do it? He and I are gonna reconvene in a few weeks because he wanted to talk with Jeremiah and then think about timing and how that weaves into our, our existing students and structure, and when we might do that. The goal is to get that election done by the end of this school year so that the students can come, do some training, and come in with next year being at our table with us and knowing what they need to do. This committee will select one of us to be the liaison with the students. I'm just kind of helping to get it up and running, and then we can make a decision about that. And I'm excited. It's something I've really wanted us to do, and we've just not quite gotten there. We have had a few students at the table, but I think without their engagement of their committee of five and without some training, it's a little intimidating for them to be at this table. But it's, but it's an opportunity for them to kind of work their way through that initial learning and then being a real voice in how they want to connect with the middle school. And I envision also them having some opportunity to connect and meet with some of the fifth graders, too, to think about, like, you know, our student representative on this committee really represents all students, but their five-member committee is representative of the high school. But engaging them with some conversations with younger kids and, and them being able to act in that way as the student voice for, for all, as much as they can. So there's, there's a few things that we'll work through. We had a great meeting. And then you'll hear more when we've actually got the policy up and running. It's really more of a, the law is there. When we did our policy review, it's in our policies. We already added that, thank you, policy committee. So it really is more of a process and procedure part of it. So we don't really have to vote on that. But I think it'd be helpful for everybody to take a look at it before it actually gets up and running. So Marcus and I will do a follow-up meeting in a few weeks. I think we already scheduled that, I just don't remember when it was.
I like the idea of having a student run at the table. I think it's a really, really good initiative. When you go in and do your, your, you said you mess, do you meet the students and say, you know, check, do your check-ins? How's it going? You know, what, what do you, what do you need? Like, how, how is that population chosen? And is it a certain grade? Is it, how is, like, who do you, who'd you meet with?
When I did it this time?
What's the goal? Like, who are you meeting with? Is there a certain grade? Like, are you looking to just meet with the older kids? It would become a need to do this student representation? Or how do you pick that population?
There really were two separate things.
Okay.
The student, the student advisory committee, which is actually by statute, and the student at our table, we have been in non-compliance with the law for a long time.
Right.
So that's that thing. That's, that's separate. But the goal, I think, would be that the, any existing student group would be able to talk to their own student advisory committee, or the student advisory committee would go out to the students to talk about whatever issues. So any issues that might be coming up from us, that student representative, the idea would be a, sort of a cyclical conversation. They're at our meetings, they'll go back to the student body, and they'll have a committee of five, so they won't have to be just one person. And so that's, that's how the, how it's structured. Like I said, MASC has a, they have a, like a 40-page handbook for the students. We teach them a little bit about Robert's Rules of Order. If I'm the person selected, I'm happy to do some, you know, teaching about sort of how meetings are run, that kind of stuff. So that's how that will be. The decision to go back and just get some feedback from the students was a follow-up from, some may remember that when, I think, Orin, you were part of this. When we were getting ready to do the selection that ultimately resulted in Dr. Collins being our superintendent, we did a series of community forums. Liz Afond, our MASC rep with us, Megan Kirby did a couple of them. I think Orin did a couple. And we went to different, you know, groups. This was an example of me just wanting, and Kim and I talked about it, Bill and I talked about it, I think I reached out to Jeremiah, to just go back to the school and tell them about who are we as a school committee, to student, student representatives. And then also to sort of do a very, very kind of open-ended, what do you like about your school? And what are you struggling with? To kind of give us a little bit of feedback here about how we're doing. We've been doing a lot of initiatives. So it was, so the chosen, I emailed out to Jeremiah, who then Select helped me to figure out who were the advisors. So the student government advisor for the high school, and that's the student government, not the class officers, that rep is Erin Malloy. And so I connected with her and made a plan to meet the students and, and did the agenda. And then the middle school class officers, that's Colin. Finnegan, thank you. From Lee, you know, we chatted. And so he brought them together, and I did it really very simply. It was very high, you know, first of like, who knows what the school committee is? Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs sideways, and they were all a little bit like, eh. So talked a little bit about what we do. And then wanted to know if they had any questions about that. And then did sort of a, you know, what do you think is good? What do you think is, would you like to see worked on with each of the groups? And then I made a little document that I shared with Bill. And then we have to have a conversation about what's the next steps for that. Because I do want, but I shared some of that with Marcus Haas, too, about some of what we heard. Without, it was clear, like, no names, nobody's names were there. Some questions just sort of about what they're seeing, what they're trying to do. They had, the idea would be to potentially, whether it's their own student government doing it or some, one of us, like, connecting with them, to say, okay, what are some things you would like to do to try to solve this? There's an existing Department of Justice program that I've been trained as a trainer for called the Spirit Program. Years ago, Lenox was gonna sign on to it. We didn't, for whatever reason. And it's really a student initiative. The focus primarily is middle school. They did it at Central Berkshire. I was part of a facilitation team that did it for the DuBois Middle School. And that's kind of the model, is sort of identify who you are, and then you talk about what kinds of things you like, what kinds of things we'd like to change. And then the students coming up with initiatives that thinks about ways that they might be able to solve some of the issues. Now, that part of it hasn't happened because I just kind of wanted to, we were at time. The kids were really great. They wanted to engage and talk. And then I think, though, the ideal would be that their movement would be more to having those meetings with their student advisory committee, and that being the conduit to us. But I also think, you know, whatever, if they, you know, if there's another idea about how to do that, it'd be fine. But it was great. It was good to, it was good to meet with them and talk with them. Yeah. I gave, I gave over what I had to Bill, and then I think the talk is with the leadership team to figure out what to do next, which would be for them to figure out.
I ask only because I always, I always, I tend to worry. When we, when we look for feedback, and we, you know, you want to check in with the students, whatever the initiative is, I think there's a tendency, and it doesn't sound like this here, but I think there's a tendency to go to, oh, we need help, let's call the National Honor Society. Oh, we'll go to the student government. Oh, we'll go to the advisory. I think there's a whole population of students that have things to say and have really, really good ideas. And I don't know, I don't, I don't pretend to know the answer to this, but I would love to try and figure out how we actually reach out more to that student population and maybe in conjunction with the other students that have that, you know, familiarity and confidence and, you know. So that's what, that was the reason I was asking. I was like, was wondering how you chose who you were talking to or, you know, if we're gonna move forward. But I just always worry about that population.
I 100% agree with you, because I do think that sometimes kids that are a little more outgoing, whatever, they're noticed and they're asked, et cetera. This was an opportunity for them to talk. Some of the kids were very, very quiet, some were quite vocal, but they were elected people to, elected by their peers. But the idea, I think, of the student advisory committee, once that's up and running, would be to say to them, you know, how are you getting feedback from your peers? And they don't have to put their name on it. It doesn't have to be answering a survey. It's more about them, you know, talking about kind of what they're seeing within their school and how do they want to solve it with some adult support and what kinds of things that they want to bring to us. I mean, that's what I think about, is the idea of the peers coming up with some ideas and then coming and saying, this is what we think will help. And then obviously with some support.
You know, the student, the member there, they'll be a non-voting full member of the school committee.
Correct.
So in that regard, I, I wonder, expanding it just beyond this table, if there would not be opportunities for that robust discussion of student life on some of our subcommittees? So then we would have not only a voice here, but then a voice which would not affect our, you know, we could then have a voice within the subcommittees that could be working on specific areas.
Yes. And the student, the elected to our group can go back to their subcommittee, like, their group of five, to do some of their own work and then bring it back to us. I think that's the idea of that cycle. So yeah, thank you. I think that, that will be a great opportunity for us.
All right, thank you. Any other business? All right, well, then we could adjourn. But not until someone moves.
I moved to adjourn, oh, Kim moved to adjourn, I'll second it.
And then we have to vote. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
We are adjourned, thank you.